Ready?
Sure.
Okay, we'll call this meeting over. And we'll begin with a moment of silence. The members will rise to the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item is to move the agenda. Does anyone have any changes? We do have some changes.
We do have some changes. Let me just check something real quick on the... I would recommend we move the tentative budget, the senior homestead exemption committee and the district improvement plan items up to... Where did we talk about?
Between the two spotlights.
Can it be before that equity?
In between the spotlights, I thought.
Yeah, before the equity spotlight.
Right before the equity spotlight, is that right?
Right.
Yes.
And what were the three items? There was the district improvement plan, the senior homestead.
And the budget.
And the budget.
Okay, any other changes?
We're having to move some things around because I have to make an airplane. So, I apologize for those who are seeing a change in schedule, but we just want to make sure we get to things that require me to be here, so.
Okay. Next, we have minutes from... Let's see, the January fourteen regular monthly meeting. Do we have any changes to the January fourteen minutes? So those will be entered as presented. And we also have at least a work session in January twenty eighth. Any changes?
No.
Okay, so those will be entered as presented. And that brings us to the spotlight, the first spotlight for Renfro.
All right. Who's representing Renfro? Greg, come on up.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
The Renfro World Language Department is excited to spotlight some of the amazing things they're doing inside the classroom and beyond. If you notice, I said World Language Department, not the Spanish Department, because as you probably know, last year, we added French to that department. So, the Renfro Spanish teachers are Kelsey Alm, where's Kelsey? Sarah Lee, Kate Wilson, Amanda Guske, Barbara Boda, and Will Laverne. And our Spanish, and our French teachers are Hady Fiedler and Melissa Kovar. We also have some kiddos helping us out. Ethan, Kim, Bennett, Catherine, Sophia, Shamara, and Ray is gonna help us out. So, folks.
All right. So, like you just said, we thought it'd be nice to show how our students are using their language inside and outside the classroom. So they each have a little blurb to say about some experiences they had outside the classroom. So, Kim and you can start.
Hola, me llamo Kim Tyrlandium y me encantaba el viaje de clase a Winona Park. Me gusta trabajar y leer con los niños. Yo recomiendo que el próximo año hacen este viaje otra vez porque es una experiencia única. Gracias.
Hola, me llamo Ethan y fui a Winona Park con otros estudiantes de séptimo grado. Fuimos a clases del primer y segundo grados. Todos los estudiantes eran muy amables conmigo y muy inteligentes. Fue una actividad divertida. Me gustó la experiencia mucho y me gustó leer libros a los estudiantes jóvenes. Recomiendo esta experiencia a los estudiantes en el futuro.
Hola, me llamo Bennett y yo soy una estudiante en el octavo grado. En mi clase de español durante el empiezo del año, nosotros leemos libros para aprender español en un nivel nuevo. Luego fuimos a Ocris para leer libros a estudiantes en el tercer grado. La experiencia era divertida y positiva.
Hola, me llamo Catherine y estoy en la octavo grado. Hoy mi clase fue a la viaje de Beaufort Highway Farmer's Market y Plaza Fiesta. Veo a quince niñas vestidas y frutas con todo el mundo. También una corazon de vaca y un laguanga. Que asco! La viajes de la campo es muy divertido igual y es una experiencia nueva para yo y me encanta mucho. Gracias.
Muy bien.
First day, France.
Bonjour, je suis une élève de Madame Fiedler. J'apprends le français et j'ai utilisé ça depuis deux ans. Le français est une de mes cours favoris. Nous apprenons le mot français mais aussi la culture. Pendant notre unité de la nourriture, nous sommes allés en excursion à Café Alsace pour parler en français avec la propriétaire et pour prendre un petit déjeuner français. C'était très amusant. Nous fêtons le jour férié francophone aussi, comme Mardi Gras et le Fête de Saint-Nicolas avec les traditions et coutumes françaises. Chaque semaine, nous apprenons aussi plus de la culture francophone avec lundi lecture, musique mercredi, et vidéo vendredi. Nous lissons, regardons, et écoutons la musique, littérature, et les films français. Alors, nous n'apprenons pas que le mot français mais aussi la culture, coutume, et les arts. Merci.
Merci.
Hola, me llamo Shamera. Clase de español es mucho divertido en Renfro. Me gusta el festival se llama Aprender y Mirar. Hice un proyecto de un catril y ropa tradicional de Latinoamérica. La clase de español es muy interesante y aprendimos cosas diferentes.
Hola, me llamo Ray. Me gusta la clase de español en Renfro porque es muy divertido y interesante. Me gusta la festival de arte en el sexto grado y este año me gusta actividades de los días de juegos como Kahoot o Quiz Life. También me gusta leer los libros en español y los profesores son muy fantásticos. Y estoy muy feliz para aprender los clases de español en el sexto grado. Gracias.
De nada.
So, unlike elementary school where Spanish is considered connection or a special year class, at Renfro, world language, French and Spanish are considered core classes. For the middle years program, we have five different core classes. We have math and science, individualism studies. We have language and literature that we refer to as language A. And then we have language acquisition, which we, world language that we address as our language B.
Unlike our other colleagues who also teach core content, we teach multiple curriculums and grade levels. On average, more students per class and an additional class period. This means we have one less planning period, yet we address the same criteria as language and literature.
Studies have shown that we most easily acquire a foreign language or a second language before the age of fourteen. It is around that time that our ability to acquire language plateaus. Our curriculum takes advantage of the student's natural young ability to learn. Stamp tests, which stands for standard-based measurement of proficiency, measure the ability to communicate through the four modalities of reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Our students had promising results on the stamp test last year, which were administered for the first time to our seventh graders for Spanish as well as French.
So, wanted to show you, this team colleague, our board, just some of the data that the stamp presented. As you can see, from Renfro seventh grade to Decatur High School tenth graders within Spanish, we are clearly on a pathway towards IB diplomas. By seventh grade, the bottom composite score is of those four modalities, the average combining together. So this shows a clear pathway for our IB diploma. Go ahead, the next one for me. Similarly, in French, we also have very promising results. You can see that our seventh graders are performing quite well and leading towards a... This was at a time when it was a new department as well. So Madame Fiedler is doing an excellent job then, and Madame Kovar continues that. One more, I believe. So this is unofficial results, this is this year. But this is seventh grade Spanish with no prior experience. Whether it was students' math scores prevented them, they needed to take reading remediation or math remediation that was preventing it, or they moved to our district. And with one full year of study, the stamp should lead to a two point five seven national average. These students began a month later, and they took the test last week. So with four months still to cover, our department was able to create a curriculum and was able to get these students to a two point three nine. It may not sound impressive, but with four less months, it's actually pretty good. And this is the same with French. So Madame Fiedler again, and Madame Kovar with one full year.
She wanted to make sure you didn't miss that slide.
I didn't either, right? So, they're actually outperforming national average with less time. So, two point four two, doing a great job.
Excellent. So, for all of the reasons that we have listed and that our students have so graciously contributed, we are hopeful that we can continue to grow our world language department and hopefully join grade level teams. A team is comprised of one teacher per core content in a grade level, and there are four teams per grade level at Renfro for a total of twelve. A team has the benefits of a common planning time and streamlined communication between parents, students, and teachers. This includes more opportunity for differentiation, which means greater support for gifted students and for students who are not meeting our standards. All right, so in order to meet all the needs of our department, our world language department requires three more teachers to be on a team. So we're really proud of all we've accomplished, our students for being here. And we're really excited for future growth, not just with our department, but also with our students. So, thank you for your time and just everyone. Thank you.
Muchas gracias estudiantes.
Your language skills are fantastic. It was really fun to realize I was understanding you and that it just, it's so exciting. And I also appreciate the teachers, everything that you do, to make the language come alive with the cultural excursions. I was fortunate to go on the field trip to Plaza Fiesta today. I mean, it really just brings it to life. The kids have fun with it and it makes it seem more than just another class in school. So thank you for everything that you do.
Well, I wasn't understanding it, which is... I was so impressed that your education is gonna be so much better than mine. And I can tell you, watching my own kids, so I've got a number of them. But they, they graduated this program and fluent in Spanish, and I have just watched it open the doors, the opportunities that they've had as a result of their language skills. You know, this is, this is, this is gonna open your horizon, so keep it up. It's very, very good.
And as a former Renfro teacher, I understand the challenges and how much our world language teachers are able to do with a larger class size. I used to be Ms. Fiedler's neighbor. And so just wanna thank you all for all of the way that our students are benefiting and growing as world language students and so, yeah.
Thank you guys so much for presenting today. That was quite impressive and just a reminder of why I love our school district so much and the, and the things that we do to set ourselves apart from the rest of the state. And just, just real practical, everyday things that you all are doing, you know, just to take it up a notch and take it up a level. And it seems very much that the kids are engaged, but also that you as the teachers are really dedicated to what you're doing. And that seems very obvious to me right now. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to come and present to us. Thank you so much.
I might add, just because the Spanish program and the world language program has been such a focus of the board and of some of the, some of the... Over the past few years with budget decisions and whatnot. And when the program was reconfigured a little bit in the last couple of years, one of the things that resulted is an agreement that we would have a more rigor in our evaluation of the program. And I think the stamp...
Is a result of that.
Is a result of that. And I'm really happy to see it. I'm also happy to see that it validates what we're doing and gives us a yardstick to know that we're on the right, on the right path, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And you don't have to stay if you don't want to, just so you know. Although we are about to talk about budget.
So we have another spotlight item, but that's gonna wait until after.
Yep.
And so now, that brings us to the tentative FY twenty twenty-one budget.
Yes. I'm gonna plug in here. I've got copies of these for you guys. Did you already switch my screen? Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, I wanna start just by a quick illustration for everyone because sometimes it can be confusing. And it's confusing for me too when I hear things like what they pay someone in another school district and why in the heck can we not be competitive with those school districts? And so, I thought it might be helpful just to see one example of how past decisions impact present budgets. Do not take away that I am advocating for any change here whatsoever. This is just an illustration so we can understand the impact of our decisions over time. So, what you have here is a graphic of how we staff and fund our lower elementary schools versus a more typical model. And so, on the left of each graph is what we spend for the core components of a school in terms of administrative assistants, principals, assistant principals, counselors, custodians, instructional coaches, media clerks, media specialists, nurses, principals, Spanish teachers, specials teachers, and all teachers, okay? And on the left side, far left side of that screen, you can see that we currently spend about twelve and a half million dollars funding our five elementary schools in those categories, our five lower elementary. Not surprisingly, our lower elementaries are tiny, right? Compared to our surrounding districts. If we were to staff those schools like our surrounding districts do, and again, I'm not saying we should. Have I been clear about that? Okay. The cost to have a, say, north side elementary and a south side elementary would be closer to six and a half million dollars, okay? So those are apples-to-apples costs. Where a lot of the difference comes in is in key things, such as, we have a Spanish program. And so we invest money in that Spanish program. We have extensive school budgets compared to what most school budgets are. We kick in a lot more money in our school budgets. We have five schools instead of two. And what that does is not just multiply how many, like, core staff members you need. You have five principals instead of two. You have five instructional coaches, et cetera. You have inefficiencies in rounding, right? Students don't come in nice neat little packages, you've heard me say this before. And so when you split them amongst grades and amongst buildings and you start building classes, you end up having to round up to that next class much more often because they're split out into separate schools. Whereas when they're all in one school, which is what we see at Fave and Tally, it's a lot more efficient, okay? What I did on the right-hand side there was just to look, because obviously the vast majority of our money goes to teachers, as it should. On the right side, I took out all the teachers and just looked at the classroom versus non-classroom because we also invest in other areas within the school outside the classroom. And a typical model would cost about one point five million dollars. Our model costs almost three point five million dollars. So I just use that as an illustration again, not advocating for any change, but just to help us understand that when I see that another school district is able to offer a principal fifty percent more, fifty, five zero, percent more than we offer a principal, this is one of the reasons why. They spend a considerably different amount of money. I looked up one high school that is very similar to Decatur High School in all socioeconomic demographics, in racial demographics, but they are about fifty percent bigger, okay? They have a slightly higher CC-RPI score, so they're also high achieving. Their budget for all of their staff salary and benefits at that high school is about half what our budget is, and they're fifty percent bigger. So, we spend a lot of money on a lot of stuff that is very different. And I just, I wanna emphasize that there are decisions that have been made in the past, and we've talked about that around here. These are just some examples, right? And I just bring that up because in the future, at some point, we may have to talk about some of these things. I do not think we're gonna have to at this point. But I do want, it's really easy, once a decision is made, to forget that it was made. And forget that it's still an ongoing decision every single year to continue whatever those decisions were. So, if it would be helpful at some point in the future, I'm happy to bring, I have tons of examples like this of different things. I just wanted to bring the one today, just to remind us. There are decisions built into this budget even where we are not specifically calling out those decisions because they have happened at some point in the past. Does that make sense? On the budget itself, I wanna call your attention to what has changed since the last budget. So, if you flip to page... Actually, let's start at the very end. Page fifteen. So, a couple of things that have changed since the last budget. As you know, we have contracted with a third party to help support our staff support and finance departments while we transitioned to get some new leaders in those departments. They have been incredibly helpful in our work moving forward and keeping things moving along. And one of the things they did was check all of the revenue numbers for me. I asked the retired finance director to run all of the numbers and give me his estimate of where we should be. And he did a great job, got me the information, and that's why you'll see the FY twenty twenty-one budget for revenue numbers are slightly different. And here is where they're different. On the QBE, which is the funding that we get from the state, there were two changes that we made. One is that he felt that we shortchanged our QBE funding by about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That based on the numbers he's looking at, he believes we'll get about a hundred and twenty-five thousand more dollars. And then, since the last time we discussed this, the governor announced a two thousand dollar pay raise for all teachers, and that will result in about a million dollars for us. So those two amounts have been incorporated there, and they were not there last time. The number right after that is, or right under that is called local fair share. This is where we contribute money based on that QBE formula. And it's a way for the state to make sure that every community has to pony up some of the money to fund their students. They can't just completely rely on the state, and it's called local fair share. And we can get into details of that at some point. He believed that we underestimated the impact of local fair share to the tune of seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And so I have decreased that number another seven hundred and ninety thousand from what it was last time. He said it's gonna be a little bit bigger hit than what we're anticipating. Okay. The other things that you'll see, I'll talk about right now, is I added a line called "from fund balance." As you know, we have some fund balance that we, and we talked about whether or not to use it and how to use it. And so you will see four hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. In order to balance this budget between revenues and expenses, we would have to use about four hundred and twenty thousand of the sixteen point six million dollars to balance that, to make it come out to zero, okay? And what you can see down below, where it says revenues over expenses, that number now says zero. That's why that says zero, because I use fund balance. The other thing you'll see, and Doug, you can tell me if this is the right word or not. I said designate funds from fund balance. What's the word? Designate, allocate? Assign, thank you. Assign funds from fund balance, not to put you on the spot or anything, but... We, if we assign funds from fund balance, you, as we have talked about, perhaps like starting a capital improvement set aside or something like that. So I put five million dollars there, and I picked those numbers because it gets us within our board policy of four to fifteen percent unspent balance. So those are changes from the last time in terms of what you see on the actual budget document itself, okay? If you go back, I think it's three pages, to page ten. On page ten, you'll see a lot of additions from what we talked about last time. So, one thing I did, we talked about focusing on our lowest paid employees and trying to get our salaries and more competitive for those employees. I was able to finish three analyses before this budget, and that is for food and nutrition staff, custodial staff, and bus drivers. And what I did is I went through and redid the analysis that we've looked at before using the most recent salary schedules for the major districts in our area. And as you can see, I'm recommending some changes there that do two things. One, it brings some consistency to our pay scales because right now, they are not always consistent. And number two, it makes us much more competitive. And so you can see for food and nutrition staff, it raises the range from right now, it's nine thirty-three to sixteen twenty-six per hour. And it would range it, or raise it to twelve to nineteen eighty per hour, which is an average increase of twenty-four and a half percent or three thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars per position on average. Changes to custodial staff, ten twenty-one to seventeen ninety-one per hour, up to twelve to nineteen eighty per hour, or about thirty-six hundred dollars per employee. And changes to bus driver rates, thirteen twenty-three to twenty-three oh eight, up to sixteen fifty to twenty-six ninety, or an average of forty-eight seventy-four. These, all of these changes would bring every one of our steps on those scales to between first and third among metro school districts. To go all the way to first would be prohibitively expensive. And as I've talked about before, some school districts pay certain employee groups much higher than others, and you just can't compete with that because they're not competing across the board. So first to third gets it very competitive and is a reasonable increase. There are three more groups I did not have a chance to get to, and so I would like to potentially bring you a budget amendment in the future. And that is bus monitors, para educators, and childcare workers. They also are in the similar pay ranges of these. And I would guess that those amounts, just looking at it imprecisely, they're in probably the two hundred thousand dollar range total, maybe a little more for those three. But do know, I wanna bring those back to you at some point. There just wasn't time to finish it before this. The two thousand dollar raise that the governor gave to teachers, if it passes, would result in a range of either between two point one one and four point five percent increases to teachers at any given step with an average of three point oh seven. And you may recall, we talked about two percent is fine cola for staff who are already making a decent wage. For those, we want to get higher. Three percent would be a better goal, and that works out actually perfect for that average there. And then at the very top, you'll see the two percent cola is for all those other employees that aren't included in one of those four lines, or once I can get the other three in there. We're still recommending a step increase for all eligible employees, and we're still recommending additional positions. I'm recommending fourteen additional positions at a cost of one point one nine million dollars. The, I incorporated a lot of different budget requests, and the version of the budget you have before you right now is slightly expanded from the other, and I'm gonna go through those pages in a second. But in general, we added about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand for behavioral health services and staff. We added five hundred and forty-four thousand for reading intervention. We added three hundred and ninety thousand for special education support. Hundred and twenty-five thousand for equity programs and trainings and establishment of a financial aid fund. We had a couple miscellaneous salary changes that totaled to seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty. We had several departments and like sub-departments that didn't have a budget and needed a budget to do what they need to do, and some that needed slight increases, so that came to one forty-five. And then the other thing that the CFO who did our analysis for us, he informed me that we were missing out on some of the savings to our DTRS. And he estimated we actually were gonna save a hundred and twenty-five thousand more than what was in the previous budget. So if you look, this did say, whatever that would be, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, but it's actually six hundred and twenty thousand of savings. So, what I did on the next page is I broke out all of those requests because I know you had that giant book of budget requests, and it might be helpful to know which ones were those that were in there. So in the next three pages, I have tried to list every single... So, in the next three pages, I have tried to list every single budget request, and so, you can see where it is. I may have missed some, but hopefully, I got them all. So, the behavior health includes the Decatur Student Center had requested three per, three FTE. Um, the funding I was able to include was one and a half FTE, um, with the idea of moving slowly into the full request, maybe over two years. The CEEX training for new teachers and mentors. The RMS Student Center was, is basically taking that concept from, um, the DHS Student Center to Renfro. And, um, Gail Rothman and I spoke the other day, and she generously offered to cover for a couple of years the salary part of that addition of a person, and we would cover the benefits. So, many thanks to DEF, that is fantastic, thank you. That would be difficult to do without that, and that really helps make it happen, and it's, it's a great example of where our priorities align, and that really helped. Um, the reading intervention and support, um, that is that funding that responds to Senate Bill forty-eight and the dyslexia pilot that we are accepted for, and you can see the details. There's an MTSS lead for the FAVE cluster of elementaries, a lead for the Tally, reading coaches for each of those, a speech, speech language pathologist, additional reading curriculum materials, some testing protocols, and training in structured phonics, and that totals to five hundred and forty-four. That, the details of that are, there's a lot. I won't go into them right now, but if you want, they're in that booklet, um, and in the pilot. Special education support, as you know, special education is always, um, needing more and more support. It's becoming more and more, um, something that a lot of kids need, and it really is stressing out our staff quite a bit. We're pushing to the limits. Um, and so, I did incorporate, um, the third proposal for the special ed, um, request, which included a special ed coordinator, two what we call special education lead teachers. We have two right now, um, and this will bring it to four, and they, they have been a phenomenal addition to the department and have been doing a great job. Um, increasing their workdays from a hundred and ninety to two hundred and ten workdays. And then, we also get some savings, about three thousand dollars. So, that's a total of three ninety. Um, some equity programs, we talked about the Afrofuturistic Warriors and Doras programs, um, and we talked about maybe ramping up to that one, so I included twenty-five thousand of the seventy-five thousand requested. The equity training for leaders, the financial assistance accounts. We had a couple different requests for financial assistance accounts. I lumped it all under one, because I would really like to see that as a more centralized thing, um, and not just have little bits, um, here and there. And then, um, culturally responsive teaching trainers of trainers, so bringing it in-house to do some of our culturally responsive training. Um, there were a couple little salary shifts. One was changing our, um, IS specialist to coordinators, and one was making a lead social worker by adding some additional days. The creation of budgets for new departments, et cetera. Um, transportation budget, um, we did forty-five of the fifty thousand. Um, a SANA license increase, seven thousand, coaching stipend increase of eight thousand. Um, the staff student and parent climate surveys for thirty-five thousand. Um, I think that's, um, what is that called? Tripod? Um, tripod, which some of you have talked about, that's that one that you were talking about, um, in the past. Um, a, an operational budget, budget for nursing and for school counseling, an increase to the college heights operating budget, um, a composting budget at Renfro, and a, um, budget for equity and, um, student support, because they have grown, but their budget hasn't changed. On the next list, I have a detail of the requests that I was able to cover with this year's budget. Um, and so, that was the other thing we talked about, since we do have a healthy fund balance, let's try to knock some of these off right now, just like we did last year. I'm not gonna go through one by one, but every single one of those, I have notified people that, um, they can go ahead and move forward with those items, and that way, we get them taken care of right now. Um, some of them might need more funding in the future, but it's a huge bump to a lot of those to get them, to get them done this year. And then, the final page is just kind of filling in on some requests that you don't see here and why you might not see them. So, for instance, the activities on a Leth, uh, Lethic Assistant Director, I'm actually gonna do that by, um, repurposing another vacancy that's coming up. Um, the funding for two reading coaches is already part of that reading intervention. We had done them as two separate proposals, um, just in case one didn't go. Um, some of these you'll see, like, needs more development or needs additional discussion. Those just really need more, they're not ready to be funded at this point. Um, like, the summit, uh, for principals and E-team members, we can try to do in-house temporarily. Um, the recruiting one, I wanted to pause that until we actually had an executive director of staff support, so they could have some say in what we did, et cetera. So, um, those kind of explain what's happening there. And then, the final page is, um, all of these personnel requests, and there are any of our world language teachers here still? Oh, I guess we can't approve it. Um, uh, there's those three world language teachers right there. Um, these are all the different personnel requests that we need to, um, talk about in terms of when we're adding these staff, can we work some of these into the additional staff that we're doing? Um, or are we gonna have to phase into these at some point? I did think of one more thing that I should have mentioned, and that is, I did do an analysis of, um, teacher salaries, for instance. Um, and I do want to bring to you a recommendation in the future, um, but I did not want to rush that. It is just too big of a deal. Um, and I do think there are some things we can do over the next, like, three to five years to really get much more competitive in our teacher salaries, but we also have to be really cognizant of, um, kind of how we roll that out, um, and get lots of input and, um, have a lot of discussions about that before we do it. Um, so, uh, ultimately, we do want to address the salaries of all of our employees and make sure they're competitive, and I just want to make sure that's clear, um, since some folks weren't at the work session when we talked about that. So, that is a very quick overview of the budget.
And what do you have, five minutes?
I have five minutes.
So, quick questions?
Yeah, I, I, I think most people don't read through our minutes from the budget.
Yes.
The majority of our conversation was about making sure that we're competitive in places, and you said you can undo the pass. Thank you very much for the food and nutrition and the custodial and the bus driver pay. So, it, the sooner you can put something out publicly, it reflects that our conversation was about the teachers and making their salaries competitive.
Yes.
And that is something that we would like to do it, and in a year where a four percent pay raise is coming.
Yep.
Maybe it's the toughest year to do it.
Yep.
That would be great.
Okay, we can do that.
We need to save sixty seconds to address something before he disappears.
Good.
So, and we can, but you got real quick questions, like lightning questions? I have one comment. I assume that our two thousand dollar pay increase, because that's uncertain if that's gonna go through.
Correct.
But what we're doing is a pass-through, so we've claimed it in the budget, but if it doesn't materialize, unfortunately, teachers will get whatever the gov, whatever the General Assembly and the governor agree on.
Yep.
It won't affect our budget.
The worst-case scenario is that if they did not put it through at all and did not put a cost of living adjustment, we would have to take about a million dollars of fund balance if we didn't want to change what we were planning to do for the teachers. Does that make sense?
Well, that's actually sort of my question.
Yes.
I feel like, I mean, we've got our-
The two thousand dollars brings us a million dollars, which we're passing straight on to the staff.
We're planning to give them the two thousand dollar bonus, whether or not the state gives it.
I would hope so. Ideally, yep, yep.
All right, so ninety seconds or something like that? Why don't you, why don't you, the discussion? Okay, we, I apologize, because David's leaving, we're just gonna hop to another topic real quick, which is that we need to, to have a quick discussion about the committee, um, to, that we, uh, want to form in order to discuss the senior tax exemption and, uh, changes to it. And we're gonna have a longer discussion of this, um, but the basic idea is to have a, to, at least my idea, my proposal for now, that I've discussed with some of you, is to have a steering committee that would, you know, consist of maybe seven people, and we can figure out the groups to be represented on that steering committee. Work with the steering committee to get broader public involvement with many other people. The, the committee is gonna require some facilitation. It's gonna require a chair, which maybe the steering committee could self-appoint, but it's also gonna require some just facilitation, someone to sort of be there with them and, um, help get notices out and all the rest of it. And I was wondering if you have any idea who might be able to do that?
I would be happy to do that, if, if the board would be interested in me doing that.
Excellent. Is that, does that suit everybody?
Yes, I mean, that's, that's very helpful. Um, I think the draft that you put together, David, is a great start, um, and we can talk about it in more detail without you, but I think we just, you know, knowing that you're willing to do that gets us part of the way that we wanted you to be here for. Um, and then, yeah, we can talk about the details of it. Go on forward.
So, we can save the rest of it for a longer discussion?
Sure.
Thank you.
Perfect. Um, so, i- if you want to vote on the budget tonight, um, that's fine. Uh, as you, just a quick reminder for anybody who hasn't been paying attention, um, we are, we're bringing the budget at this meeting because we intend to start doing hiring based off that budget. Um, it sounds like we're, we're okay with the budget, but if not, um, I, I need to know that because we are moving forward with our staffing plans based off the budget that I presented tonight. Um, if you'd like to vote on it, that's fine. The formal vote for the budget will still be in June, as it has been traditionally, um, on the tentative and the final budget in July. Um, or no, the final budget in June, the millage rate in July. So, that will still happen, like in the past. Um, and it's fine, if you don't want to vote on it tonight, that's fine, because I would like to bring you those other three employee groups at some point. Um, but if you want to vote on it tonight and then vote again with the amendment, either, either method's fine, so.
What's your preference?
Waiting for the amendment and just voting one time?
I am.
That's fine, and generally, I can say I'm, I'm on board with what you've presented so far, and thank you for all of the additional detail.
Yeah, no problem.
It's very interesting and helpful in our conversations with the community, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, thank you, I apologize, I have to run, but thankfully, I have tagged Dr. Furman, and she's gonna come take over.
Okay, now, when we-
Yeah, hey, keep the seat empty.
Surprise!
Next question for the board is that when we revise the agenda, we intended to discuss a number of items before David left that we didn't get to. Do we want to keep the revised order, or what? So, we're done with the agenda?
I think we go back, we should go back to the spotlight. The spotlight?
Yes. So, so we'll revert.
Go back to that, yeah.
Okay, so let's proceed with the equity spotlight for Claremont, which maybe you could introduce.
Good evening.
Ah, there we go, no introduction needed.
I'm going in here, um, the team is gonna go up to the podium. My name is Curtis Armour, for those of you all that may not know me, I'm the principal at Claremont Elementary School. We are uber excited to be here with you all tonight to present our equity spotlight. I definitely want to, um, shine a light on the five members of our equity team that is here. We do have equity team that's about twice the size of this, but five members are here with us tonight. Um, and this is truly a team, um, that exhibits true shared leadership in the building. Um, last year, I was the chair of the equity team, and this year, I charged our school nurse, um, Mrs. Chanel Hupkamp, to lead the equity team, and she did graciously, um, take that, um, position on, and she's doing a wonderful job, um, rallying our team together and working together for our equity initiatives at Claremont that are ongoing, um, throughout the months, for, and that have positively impacted our students, our staff as well, as our school committed.
At Claremont, we are learning that equality means finding out what people really need to do their best and giving them what they need. We are also learning about some things that stand in the way, like racism. We have been reading books about equality and equity, and also race and even being very kind and fair to everyone around you.
Good evening. Um, as you can see on the slide right there, all the teachers were charged with the kickoff process, and so, I wanted to share with you what I did in my classroom. I'm Linda Sadler, and I teach second grade. So, I projected this slide up onto the active board, and all the students, I have twenty-three students, we were all sitting together in crew meeting, and I just told them to take a moment to see what they noticed, and then take some more time to see, to think about what they were wondering about it. And they did, and we took about one or two minutes. And then, I asked them to share out what they wanted to tell us, and they did. So, we talked about equality and equity, and it was just amazing what second graders could tell me about both. They could actually define equality, and then they could define equity. So, I took it a step further after we had this conversation, and I said, I want you to look around our classroom to see if you see examples of this. And so, they did a great job with equality, saying that, you know, there were equal things for everybody. They noticed that we had the crayons on all four tables, and we had the pencils, and then, they noticed that we had the scissors and the markers and everything else that we have there. Definitely, we all, we have those resources for everybody, everybody, equality. Then, I talked about, well, what do you notice about equity? And they kind of looked around, and they looked around, they looked around, and then, one student shared, well, we have book bins, and I said, that is correct, and everybody has a book bin. And then, she said, but we also have leveled text, and we have five different levels of text for AR reading. And she said, so, the equality piece is, we have book bins. The equity piece is, we have books for everybody for what they need, to make sure they are going to be a successful reader. And sorry, it's kind of like, woo! So, I just wanted to share that with you.
So, that was our kickoff in all of the classrooms, um, if you'll go back one. And then, we knew that we needed to, you know, of course, take it further. Um, our initiative is hoping to stretch out through the rest of the school year, and then, um, we'll go from there for next year. But for the rest of the school year, we have chosen a critical text for each month. So, this is January through May, showing what every classroom is reading. So, last month, we did Let's Talk About Race in every classroom, and we had kind of a kickoff at Community Circle, and then also a, a follow-up at the end of the month, so that we're all on the same page.
So, next, we have our Claremont Equity Initiative, our video, which is the highlight of our presentation. You get to hear from our students, our, um, parents and, uh, teachers. Our students and, um, the parents, they reflect on their, um, they share their reflections and thoughts on the equity versus equality visual. And then, our, um, teachers engage our students with our Let's Talk About Race, and so, it was very engaging. So, hope you enjoy the video. At the very end, not yet, at the very end, um, we have our celebration of the, the text that we read for the month, so you'll get to see that as well.
Thank you.
I, I, it is, eh, today, we're talking about equity, equity and equality.
Equality has the short kid, the medium-sized kid, and the tall kid, all standing on the same stools, but the shortest kid can't see the basketball game. But in equity, the tallest kid doesn't have a stool, but he, he can still see perfectly fine. And the girl has one stool that is medium-sized, and she can see the game perfectly. And the boy, which is the shortest, has two stools stacked on top of each other, and he can also see the game good.
So, equality is you're not being fair. And equity is you're being fair, and you're, and you're being nice, you're being kind, and you're ha, and you're having good sportsmanship.
On this picture, um, mostly the, um, taller boy can see, but on this picture, everyone can see.
Well, my name is Miguel Mathis, and I think the focus is about, or making sure everyone has the same opportunity and being fair to everyone, so that no one feels left behind, or someone has to work a little harder than others, and, I mean, but that's true. But it's all about giving everybody the same opportunity as the next person, and making sure everybody has the opportunity to succeed.
Is everybody equal all the time?
No.
Should we be equal all the time?
Yes.
So, whatever one person gets, that's what other people should get?
Yeah. So, can I tell you something? Sometimes, my dad brings back honey buns, but then, let's say, he brings back honey butter for all three of us, but then, let's say, he forgot two of us. That's not fair for the one of us. So, he can go, so I know a way he can create fairness. He can go back and get two more, and then, come back at the house and get, give those two to my brother and sister.
A girl. I mean, that's how it makes, that's how it makes him feel, because the pla, the little boy probably wouldn't do go to that game, and that's probably his favorite team, and he probably, and he probably didn't make it to, um, see the game.
He's tall, he can already see it.
Okay, which one do you think is better? Why?
Because three of them can see.
Equality is hard. It's hard for many of us. It means taking into consideration everyone. It means thinking about making sure that everyone has the same thing. That can be really hard for some of us, but equity- But equity is even harder because equity means being empathetic. It means knowing that another person may actually need more than you, may actually deserve more than you, may actually require more than you. That is really a struggle for some of us, especially if we didn't learn it in elementary school.
These conversations can be kind of, uh, super personal. Yeah, good word. Personal can be kind of tough at times, serious. But just know, this, this is a very safe place, right? And honesty is what we're looking for here.
As part of Claremont's Equity Initiative, each month, classes are reading the same book, school-wide, to start conversations about equity with students. This month's book is Let's Talk About Race by Julius Lester.
But just as I am a story and you are a story and countries tell stories about themselves, race is a story too. Whether you're black like me or Asian, Hispanic, or white, each race has a story about itself. And that story is almost always the same. My race is better than your race. I'm gonna stop there for a second. Yesterday, we read, actually, yeah, no, we read this yesterday. Yesterday, you guys were saying, oh wait, the author is saying, wow, my race is, some of y'all's faces went like, what? My race is better than your race? But after reading that a second time, is the author saying that that's the author's words? I'll read it again. Listen. Just as I am a story and you are a story and countries tell stories about themselves, race is a story too. What's race again?
Um, the color of your skin.
Whether you're black like me or Asian, Hispanic, or white, each race has a story about itself. And that story is almost always the same. My race is better than your race. Is the author saying that or is he talking about other people? What do you think, what do you think?
Talking about other people because it's like everybody's story, everybody. It's not just one person.
Okay, fair enough. Some stories are true, some are not. Those who say my race is better than your race are telling a story that is-
Not true.
You said, "Oh, why did you do that?" When I read the part that says my race is better than your race. Can you share with us?
You see that? Kind of like you're saying like, 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 I only care about my race, your race isn't important. And that is really sadly people do.
Why would some people say their race is better than another? Why do you think someone would say that, Lisa?
Um, maybe because they'll think that my skin color is better than others', but it's actually not true.
Does someone want to add to that? Rowan?
Well, basically, um, they might say it's like being mean, but also because maybe they don't think like people need to like learn about this culture, like where you're from.
But there are other ways all of us, even me, even you, think we are better than others. I'm better than you because my dad or mom makes more money than your dad or mom. I'm better than you because I'm white. I'm better than you because I'm black. I'm better than you because I'm Hispanic. I'm better than you because I'm Asian. None of these stories are, none of them are true, or are they? I'm better than you because I'm a girl.
How do you feel about that? That's not true. Tell me more. Be- because, because we're like made the same.
If you are better at soccer, or writing, or math, or whatever, does that make you a better person than someone else?
No.
Why? Why or why not? Claire?
Because, that's because we might have more than something of an other person.
Yep.
Um, or like have different of something of, that means that we're different.
I need your help. Here's what I want you to do. Take your fingers and press them softly against your skin right below your eyes. Be careful, don't poke yourself in the eye. Okay, now gently until you feel the hard bone right beneath the surface. Now, if your mom, dad, brother, sister, or friend is close by, ask them if you can touch them. If they say okay, take your fingers and press softly at the same place beneath their eyes. You're going to ask first. So ask if you can press in the same spot. If you don't have someone, you might want to get up with Tina and go find, there's Jimin back there. And Selah, you can work, um, with these four. Me- Mehega and Vincent. Okay, well, work with Vincent. Give him the opportunity. If you were to go outside without your skin and without your hair on your head, turn the page to see what you would look like. What would you look like? Raise your hand. Raise your hand. Braden?
Skeletons.
What do you notice about everyone's bones?
They all have rib cage.
Okay, they all have a rib cage, okay? Ruby? Oh, they don't have skin, so they both have race.
It's because they have race, none of us have skin.
Oh, okay. So our race makes us what, Leah?
I learned that these, those who say my race is better than your race, that story is not true. It doesn't matter which skin color you are or where you're from. We all have bones and we all are humans.
It doesn't matter what's on the outside, it matters what's in, what's, what's in the inside.
Y'all, this is a participatory, which means you do what it tells you to do. Kids, parents, everybody, everybody in the room. Here we go. Okay, now, press gently. Press gently until you feel the hard bones right beneath their skin. Guys, thank y'all for participating in our first Equity Celebration of Revolution. Appreciate it. Clap it up for that. Clap it up!
I'm really grateful that our children at Claremont are learning about equity because equity is about empathy, which is going to help them be more empathetic adults.
So I'll provide a brief summary here and then steps forward. My name is Jean-Jacques Creedy. I'm the Assistant Principal at Claremont, for those of you who have not met. Our Claremont Crew knew from the onset that we needed a student-facing element to the work that we were doing with the staff. We knew that our staff needed to combat our implicit biases and interrogate whiteness and examine our curriculum if we were to serve and best serve all of our students. Uh, each step of the way, we thought about how we could translate our learning into student-friendly experiences. And we knew that literature offered an entry point. We knew that we had to help our students visualize the differences people experience in everyday life. We brought out the visual of the equity inequality to spark conversation among the staff and then among the students. And as you saw guided by their teacher, students were asked to describe what they saw and offer interpretations and ask questions. Um, truthfully, we wanted students to recognize that equity means everyone gets what they need. And we think that they got that. This philosophy has always rung true at Claremont as we strive to provide students with the appropriate level of challenge and supports to help them grow into productive citizens. And each week, we fall back on our mission to learn with our heads, hands, and hearts, knowing that through empathy, our students can contribute to a better, more equitable world. And you got to see parents and student voices in that video. And, uh, truthfully, I think we made an announcement after Community Circle, hey, any parents want to give us your feedback and share your thoughts? And so that's how we captured those parents. So it wasn't like scripted or planned out. It was very impromptu, which was very, uh, real, which was great. So moving forward, each month, we're going to highlight a book. And February's Equity Book is Wilma Unlimited. If you're not familiar with Wilma Randolph, she was an Olympic gold medalist, but started off her life as a cripple and could hardly walk, um, and then ended up being one of the fastest women in the world. And so as we picked the five books for January through May, we looked for intersections around race and other areas of underserved people and also to highlight empathy and for students to recognize that, you know, everybody has a struggle, everybody has a story. Um, here's an example of the structure we provided to our staff with each text with some questions and some think alouds that they could offer along the way. We also knew that we could, you know, literacy was a key because kids love to read aloud and actually is a great way to spark conversation. So next steps, I don't know who's controlling the flicker. All right. So moving forward, the Equity Team thought about how powerful navigating the courageous conversations about race compass has been for us. So we adopted it and adapted it so that teachers can first model thinking aloud about the texts we are reading using compass language and offering a scaffold for accessing the main entry points. Uh, later on, we hope to empower students to recognize where they stand on the compass when responding to texts and even with other humans. Giving students and adults the language to engage productively in difficult situations can serve them well during their schooling years and beyond. So the compass is something we introduced at the end of January and it's something, um, the teacher's first response was, "So how can we make this kid friendly?" And this is what we did. So having a nice visual so that they could talk, think about what they're thinking, their brain, their actions with their hands and their feet, the feelings that they have in their heart. And then, um, believing actually took a little while and discussion among the Equity Crew, we landed on simply understanding right versus wrong. And that idea of like, what, what's the right thing to do for people? What's the right thing to, how to treat others? And so it's all kind of converging through restorative practices, through the crew work that we're doing in our school, um, and through the Equity Project focused on critical literacy. It's really boosting the conversation at the school level. Thank you.
Um, thank you so much for, uh, for that presentation. Um, I am, it, it warms me to see that we continue to have this conversation, that it's not just something we had for the first year or every other month. And what I really appreciated about your presentation is that it didn't just stop at, um, February with the books and that you will carry it through the whole year. Um, that really is what stuck out to me the most. So, um, I just appreciate you continuing to have that conversation and making it part of just your everyday conversation in your school. So thank you so much for presenting that.
Yeah. I, I was struck by how, um, you know, I can't remember ever having, uh, just any kind of a conversation or lesson like that. I mean, through, I don't know, until like five years ago. I mean, you know, but certainly in, in elementary school. So if you grew up, you know, like speaking that language, it's like getting, getting Spanish in third grade instead of trying to learn it when you're a little bit older. Um, and I really think it would have a pretty dramatic effect on the way people think, uh, throughout their lives. I think it's wonderful.
I reacted most strongly to when the kids were answering questions and speaking. And what I'm most excited about is to see how this carries through because we're starting now on this journey. And we're with many of our children, they're young. And I can't wait to see what that means when they're in middle school and high school and how that will change the way that we interact with each other. So thank you for having those conversations.
Thank you. Okay. Um, that brings us to public comment. And I think we only have one speaker, uh, Ms. Lupo from the Wild Center. Did anyone else sign up? I think not, right? All of you guys are pieces of paper.
Hello. Nice to see you all again. Um, I'm here to give a brief update on what we've been up to in Decatur Farms of School. Um, we have selected our date for our spring dine-out. It's our fun- largest fundraiser, spring and fall. Um, and our spring dine-out is April fifteenth. We've got about 20 Decatur restaurants on board. So come out and have a bite that night. Um, we also have our date selected for the spring taste test. We'll be tasting across the district in all the schools on May, uh, seventh and eighth. Uh, we'll be tasting broccoli, I have to say that very slowly, not broccoli, broccolini, uh, because we can harvest it, uh, really tender and eat it raw. Um, I also wanted to share with you the books that will be donated to each school. So Tally and Fave will be getting a couple of copies of, uh, The Astounding Broccoli Boy. Uh, all of the K2 schools will be getting The Vegetables We Eat by Gail Gibbons. And then College Heights and Fraser Center will get several copies of Monsters Don't Eat Broccoli. Um, and we create, uh, lesson plans that go with these books so that teacher and attach them as stickers to the inside so teachers can check them out and use them in the classroom. We also just awarded three mini grants to teachers in the district, each for $500. Uh, Sarah Guest, a fourth grade teacher at Fave, received one for gloves and plants and seeds and compost for the garden. Uh, Claudia Kubek is a gardening team parent at Glenwood. She also received $500 for the school, uh, to expand their garden, to repair existing beds, and to, um, rebuild, rebuild a shed that's there already for storage and for starting seeds. So we'll have a potting bench and a little overhang so, um, students can still work outside even if the weather isn't awesome. Uh, and then the third grant went to Matt Unwin at Decatur High School. He's in the Biology Department. And he wants to focus his efforts on year-round gardening, not just in the, uh, blazing spring and summer months, so. Um, we also have, uh, seen our garden coach, Jerry Lynn Beddingfield, uh, visit six different schools through a pilot program that we're doing to offer garden support for our schools. Uh, six schools that are being assisted through funding by the Decatur Farms of School Committee are College Heights, Claremont, Glenwood, Oakhurst, Westchester, and Fave. Um, the committee is also participating in the Earth Day, uh, festival. It's the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. So we'll be marching in the parade, um, dressed as fruits and vegetables like we do in the Hants and Saints Halloween Parade. So, uh, don't miss it. Um, and what else? Ah, yes, we, uh, the committee also awarded $3,300 to Tally Street for improvements to their, uh, getting their cafeteria set up. And along those lines, want to, um, extend our well wishes to Allison Goodman and, uh, on her retirement and share that we are excited to continue working with, um, uh, having a meaningful relationship with who is hired to replace her in the nutrition department. I think my time is up, so I will stop there. Thanks so much, guys.
Thank you. Okay, I think the superintendents, do you have a comment?
I do. Um, just one announcement really is, um, Rochelle Lofstrain is here. And, um, just wanted to recognize that she was appointed as the principal for Decatur High School. And we are currently working on a transition plan for her to take that seat. Um, but we are very excited that, um, she interviewed and that she was selected for that job. She's gonna, I think, gonna do great things at the high school, so congratulations.
I was excited by that too. Um, all right, I have a few comments. Actually, there's a lot of them, but they're all such great things. I'm, I'm going to try to fly through them. First is to congratulate Ms. Lofstrain. Um, but second was to thank everybody who came out for the facilities planning survey and that process. Uh, we are trying very hard to get as much, uh, good input as we can. So thanks for those who came out. Please keep coming out and please keep looking for the announcements. Um, the next meeting is on March 26. Second, we'd like to acknowledge the Decatur High School, that DCS was named an AP Honor School by the Georgia Department of Education in, uh, AP Schools of Distinction, AP STEM Schools, AP STEM Achievement. So congratulations. Congratulations to Air Snyder and the DHS German Club who won multiple awards at the State Georgia German Convention. Thirty DHS German students attended and the club came home with, uh, close to a dozen awards, including winning second overall for their skip. DHS, a version of this, I printed out. Ah, here we go. Congratulations to the DHS Ethics Bowl Team, who recently had two teams compete in the Regional Bowl at West Georgia. Two teams did so well that they played against each other in the final. This is the only second, second year that DHS has had a team and we are now the Georgia champions for two years in a row. Um, I've gotten some great positive feedback. This sounds like a really terrific opportunity for the kids who participated. And it was led by Cheryl Namius and her husband Eddie. And so- And so thanks to them for what, by all accounts, is a great program. Let's see, DHS also sent two teams to the mock trial regional competition on Saturday, February one. Both teams were outstanding. They competed in three rounds. One team, one team came in first and will advance to the district competition. The other team performed very well and won a majority of their ballots. This is another great accomplishment and so congratulations to the teacher team coaches, Erica Leach, Naomi, and Naomi Griffin for their hard work. It's great opportunities for our kids. Congratulations to the DHS wrestling team for a strong showing at regionals and sectionals. Three of our wrestlers did so well that they're headed to the state playoffs in Macon this week. So good luck to Evan Katz, ooh, this is hard, Evan Katz Gathicole, Ethan Karpik, and Keyshawn Sirak, Siriac. Congratulations and good luck. Congratulations to the boys varsity basketball team headed to the state playoffs for the first time in 10 years. Thanks to everybody who, who joined us for the open house at Tally. This is the first time that I had seen the completed building. The last time we were over there, it was, it had not yet been finished out. I was really proud of that facility. That is a great, great facility and it's a good job to Noel and all the many, many people who had a hand in putting that together. Let's see, the RMS students won 2019, the 2019 Georgia Stock Market Game coached by Mrs. Williams. And they'll represent Congressional District Five this spring at a special awards luncheon. Congratulations to our DHS debaters who competed at the state competition this weekend. Two of our freshmen made it all the way to the semifinal round before being bested, but only by one ballot, so it's a very good showing. So they got the semifinalist cup. Let's see here. And we have, oh, 18 DHS students and Dr. Elise Esquie Sparks represented Decatur High School last month in Athens at the All-State Reading Course. A select honors ensemble consisting of about 100 to 110 students from across the state of Georgia. If you have the honor to attend one of these things, you'll find that Decatur is extremely well represented. It hadn't always been the case, but it is these days. We, we've got a very strong program, thanks to Dr. Sparks. Congratulations to 10 Renfro students who earned a place in the Georgia All-State Band or Orchestra. Again, this is a very significant accomplishment and we've got 10 kids. I mean, it used to be that you'd be lucky to get one kid from the, from the whole, you know, school system. 10 kids, so Lucy Johnson on flute, Alice Rope on oboe, Ava DeFilippo French horn, Jackson Jeffries French horn, Jackson Zagunk trumpet, Jackson Chapman trombone, Emma Schoen viola, Zeke Warner on violin, Hazel Patty on bass, C.C. Clark on bass. Finally, congratulations to the Decatur Swim Team, who concluded the season with the state champion swim meet. Our boys came in eighth out of all of the 4A, 5A schools and the girls came in 10th out of all the 4A, 5A schools. A lot of great things happening in city schools of Decatur. All right, that is the chair's report. That brings us to consent items. We have three items on the consent agenda, the personnel report, the school nutrition report, and the financial reports. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
Motion to approve personnel report, school nutrition, and financial report.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
So the consent items pass and, excuse me, that brings us to items for action information or discussion of which we have kind of three and a half left. The first item is the development report, which is always appreciated. Does it require discussion this week?
There are no changes.
Okay. The second item is the financial audit, which we probably ought to hear something about. Mr. Moses?
Doug, can you introduce it?
Jumping the gun. He's like, I've been here before, I know these guys.
Before I have a chance to introduce Doug Moses, I, I want to give a shout out to our finance department. The, the audit was submitted on behalf of the whole team. That's Kathy Carmacar, Kathy Garrett, Monique Parker Bailey, and Melanie Jean Phillips, who's here this evening. Spoiler alert, the audit came back looking pretty great. For a second year in a row, we've had no adverse findings. And Doug Moses from Malden Jenkins will go through the details with you. Doug is a partner in CPA with this firm. We've benefited from his experience and his insight for many years. I will say that when Ms. Hurst departed, one of the very first people we reached out to for support to ensure a smooth transition was Doug. And Doug was immediately available. He's got our back. He's looking out for our kids and our staff's bits of interest. We're really grateful to have you here. Thank you very much, and I'll let Doug get into the details with you.
Thank you.
Bonjour, comment ça va? Bonjour oui?
Et bien et vous? Oui oui.
Okay, no problem. Thanks for having me here today to present these school districts' June 30, 2019 financial statements and audit results. Hopefully you had a chance to look at the financial statements, the management letter, and the auditor's discussion and analysis. As far as tonight's presentation, I'm just going to kind of touch on some of the highlights. If you have any questions as I'm going through, just stop and ask and I'll address them at that time. All right. Just kind of quick update, I know we have a couple of new board members. Malden Jenkins has been around for over 100 years. We have eight offices, we're four in Georgia, we have offices in Tennessee, Alabama, Florida, and South Carolina. Our governmental practice continues to be one of the largest niches in the firm, representing about 25% of the firm's practice. And we serve about 480 governments in the southeast, which includes about 55 school systems and about 45 charter schools. Again, Doug Moses, the partner responsible for the overall audit engagement, going on 21 years of experience. This year I had James Bench to do the quality assurance review. He's a partner with the firm, 16 years of experience. And then Allison was the engagement in charge with about three years of experience. And all of us spend 100% of our time doing governmental audits, so we don't wear different hats. I do one tax return, that's mine, I struggle with it, that's it. And then down below, just some other industries that we provide services to and other services that we provide other than your traditional accounting and taxation services. As far as the financial statements, okay, there we go. The financial statements are the responsibility of the board and management. Our responsibility as the independent external auditor is to give an opinion on those financial statements on whether or not they're materially correct. And we've issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is what you will hope to get from the external independent audit. The audit report date was as of December 6, 2019, which means that the district had its financial statements audited in a timely manner and submitted to the state. And so hats off for management and staff for working very hard to make sure that the records were in great shape to be audited. We also had a report on the 2019 federal award programs. You all had about $2.2 million of federal expenditures. We audited the special education cluster program as well as Title I Part A. Both of those amounted to about $1.3 million of federal expenditures, which is about a 60% coverage for the single audits that we done on those two programs. And again, clean opinions on those programs with no exceptions. In a separate engagement, we did do a, some agreed upon procedures for the local schools as far as looking at the receipts and disbursements. Again, that was in a separate engagement. And the period that we looked at was the calendar of the year 2018. And again, it's not on here, but we've issued that report back in May of last year. We did have some exceptions that was noted with missing documentation, lack of documentation on approvals and reviews of purchase orders and things of that nature. But again, that was under a separate engagement. All right, just moving right along. As far as our relationship with management, we received full cooperation from management staff and others. There were no disagreements with management on accounting issues or financial reporting matters. We did have some adjustments that was proposed, none that were deemed to be significant to warrant a finding, so again, really clean. We didn't have any past audit adjustments, meaning that anything that came to our attention, we went ahead and proposed those adjustments. And those adjustments are reflected in the district's general ledger and ultimately in the financial statements. As far as our independence, we are independent of the school district and its financial reporting process in accordance with the CPA professional standards. There are no fees paid to Malden Jenkins for any type of management advisory services that will have impacted our independence as your external auditor. Next few slide kind of goes over some financial trends. This first slide is looking at your governmental activities. Again, this is all of your, your governmental funds, general funds, special revenue funds, capital project funds on a full accrual basis, reflecting capital assets and long-term debt. And so this is looking at your equity or net position over the last five years. And you can see how your net position has fluctuated, and I'll try to explain it real quickly. In 2015, you had about $44 million of equity, increased to about $120 million in 2016. That was due to about $75 million of intergovernmental proceeds that was received from the city of Decatur, which was used to fund the school construction projects. Then from 2017 to 2018, you had a decrease about 50-plus million, going down from $123 to about $73 million in 2018. That was due to the district implementing GASP 75, to recognize your proportionate share of the other post-employment benefits obligation as you participate in the state health insurance plan. And so you had to recognize a liability for OPEB of about $50 million in 2018, so that explains that huge decrease. And then you had an increase of about $2.6 million from 2018 to 2019 to arrive at about $75.8 million of equity in net position. So it's pretty good. Now, the different categories of your net position, you had about $130 million invested in capital assets net of related debt. You had about $16 million that was restricted for capital projects and for your federal award programs. And then you had a deficit of about $71 million in your unrestricted net position. A lot of school districts are showing, a lot of governments are showing deficits in their unrestricted net positions as it relates to having to record your obligations for your, your net pension liabilities through TRS as well as your other post-employment benefits as well, which comes to about $100 million of obligations. So that's the reason why, if you look in your financial statements and you see unrestricted net position, a deficit amount, and that's the reason why. Next slide is looking at your general fund and then all of your governmental funds, fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures. Of course, your general fund is your main operating fund. And a good rule of thumb is to have any, anywhere from two to three months of reserves or anywhere from 16 to 25%. And you all have been in that range. 2015, it was around 22%. And now the last three years, you've been at 26% for your general fund. So you're right there in that range. And so get healthy fund balance that you all have at year end. This is looking at your total fund balance for your general fund and your other governmental funds. And your general fund fund balance went from $16.6 million in 2018 to about $17.5 million in 2019. A lot of times, people think that fund balance equates to cash. A lot of times, that's not the case. But for you all, your fund balance is very liquid. If you compare it to cash, it's about 180%, 80, 186% liquid as your cash exceeded your fund balance by $15 million. So again, pretty healthy balances for your general fund. And then as you can compare your general fund revenues and expenditures over the last five years, you can see how it continues to increase as student enrollment, as the district continues to grow, so does your revenues and expenditures, going from $51 million in 2015 up to about 68, 69, 68 million in 2019. So that's expected. All right, again, we didn't have any financial statements or federal award program findings, so again, a very clean audit. So again, hats off to management and staff for working very hard to make sure everything's in, was in order. We did have two management points. The first one pertains to compensated absences. It came to our attention that, one, employees' PTO or annual leave is not kept within the payroll system. And normally, we see all, you know, employees' PTO and annual leave kept within the payroll system. So again, it is being reviewed by independent person, so there's no issues there, but we just recommend to maintain it within the payroll system along with the other employees' annual leave. And then the second management point, as we were testing capital assets and long-term debt, we noticed that the school district had some capital leases recorded for various computer items, but then when we looked at the long-term debt, I'm sorry, the capital assets roll for, we didn't see those related capital assets in there. And the reason why, the district's policy is to capitalize items that are $5,000 or more. And these individual items were less than the threshold of $5,000, but in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, if you buy bulk purchases of these assets and, you know, individually, even if it's less than your threshold, you still have to capitalize it if it's greater. And so we had to record those assets on the, at the government-wide level as well as in the capital asset roll for. And so I believe the district has updated its policy to reflect those bulk purchases. New GASP announcements, I'd like to let you all know that Joel Black, he was a, he's been a partner with the firm for several years, probably about 15 years now. And some great news, he has accepted the new chair position at the Government Accounting Standards Board, GASP. GASP is the board that sets all of the accounting standards that federal, state, and local governments have to follow. So we're very excited for him. It's a huge honor and accomplishment. It's going to be effective July 1st for him, a seven-year term, so he'll be moving to Connecticut. So I would hate to see him leave, but again, having a partner at Malden Jenkins to be the chairperson for GASP is huge, so we're very excited for him. And hopefully, he can maybe scale back on some of these new standards that are coming out. But there's a couple I want to mention to you all. GASP 84 deals with fiduciary activities. You all do have an agency fund that accounts for the school activity funds that the district holds for others in an agency capacity. And so right now, if you were to look in your financial statements, I believe on page 16, I believe, you only are required under the current standards to show a balance sheet, okay, assets and liabilities. That's all that's reflected on that schedule right now. But applicable, applicable for this fiscal year that you're in, 2030, 2020, you're going to be required to have to show an income statement for that agency fund as well, showing revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year. And so make sure that management is aware of that and they're working to make sure that that information is readily available prior to us coming out to do the audit. And so I'll work with them on that as well. So that's going to be a new change for fiscal year 2020 in your financial statements. And then GASP statement number 87 deals with leases. Again, this is going to be applicable for fiscal year 2021. And again, we're asking that all of our clients go ahead and look at all of your lease arrangements, agreements. A lot of government's going to see where they have reported operating leases in the past, now have to be reported as capital leases, where you have to reflect the capital asset and the related debt. So again, we ask that you start evaluating all of those lease arrangements. And we continue to offer free continuing education classes to our clients. You can earn up to 28 hours of CPE credit. I've had governing body members to attend those classes, so you're more than welcome to come. Our last session was on cybersecurity risk back in December. And we try to host these at our clients' facilities in, in the Macon area as well as in the metro Atlanta area. And so again, your staff have attended those classes free of charge, and so you can see the various topics that we have. And then we also try to send out governmental newsletters to our clients to keep them abreast of changes that are out there that may affect their government. So again, it was an honor to provide auditing services to you all. You're one of my best clients. Staff enjoy working on this engagement. So again, clean audit, great, another great year.
Thank you.
With that being said, I can address any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you so much.
I have a question. I don't actually know if it's for you.
Okay.
Or if, or if you can answer it. But the, and I don't know, the, the question is how we, you know, with the transition we have in the leadership of this department, it occurs to me that I'm just, I can't even tell you, we've, we've, how is it that we capture the notes, like the thing about the threshold? So we, you said that we've updated our policy. Well, our board policy is very general and basically says follow GASP, you know, what general accounting practices. Do we have then an administrative regulation that spells out in detail all of these accounting standards that we've adopted and that you, from time to time, make a note that this needs to be changed? Or have we just lost that in the transition in the department? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, what we'll do is, um, I don't know that there's written policies about this, but what we'll do when we hire our new executive director of finances, we'll invite, um, the auditors out to do a training, to go through some courses, to make sure that none of that is lost in the process. And then the consultant firm that we're working with too, it's very experienced CFOs. So they're, once we hire a CFO, they're going to help mentor that person, and they're very familiar with the rules and regulations. So we'll make sure that that all is handed over to the next person. And I, I hear what you're saying about having some processes and procedures. I know there is a financial handbook. I haven't looked through it page by page, but I'm just kinda wondering what is in there and what's not in there. And the state also really helps with outlining what are the processes and procedures that a school system has to follow.
So there's, so when you, you said you, it was your understanding that something had been updated.
Yes. So, you know, each time we come out to do the audit, you know, we have to do some preliminary work. And so we have this systems understanding memo that kinda covers every area, you know, payroll, capital assets, long-term debt, what have you. And we give that to management to kinda update. And so within, I know within that memo is probably updated there.
I see.
So I don't think there's a formal policy that they brought to you all.
But, but it's all written down, and you start next year with the today's.
Right. Just gotta make sure the right staff gets a copy of that, in which, when I met with them, we already kinda talked about that as well.
Good. Thank you. That was my question.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Well, congratulations on a clean audit. That's awesome. Good job, everybody. Um, okay. I think we have only one remaining item. I've lost the agenda, so I can't be certain. So we have to talk about the district improvement plan and then to return to the committee. So I'll turn to.
So what we've done, um, with the district improvement plan, I don't know that we've got the app, yeah, if you wanna put the app up. Uh, we've got an app that is going to help us really create a, a live visual of our progress on the district improvement plan, where we are, where we're not. And so once Esten pulls that up, and that will do a nightly upload. So as we go into our kind of review process and update our tasks, you'll be able to see a live update on, I think it's called Agit. I'd never heard of it before, but it's a really neat tool. Um, and then we've also then put in not just our district improvement plan, but our equity action plan, our PBIS district implementation plan on this same, um, platform, so that we are able to show all of our stakeholders, our progress, if we're meeting deadlines, if we're not meeting deadlines, where we are in the implementation of that process. So I know cabinets worked really hard on transitioning all the steps of the district improvement plan, the equity action plan, um, into the ASANA, um, kind of template that Dr. Judy has set up for us. Um, and then that is what's gonna pull up into this feed. And then the plan going forward is Dr. Judy has, uh, presented the, um, oh, here, here's a little visual for you. Um, and this is the district improvement plan, and it's got some milestones set up on the top for each group. And as you see the, like, greens and green things that are done, if there's no green dot by the task, it's not done yet. Uh, but it is an easy way for us to track the progress that we're making, if we're meeting deadlines, missing deadlines, um, so that everyone can be informed of what the process is that we're making. So we, they've done a lot of work to put in all the little steps and thinkabouts. And, um, I think it's really helped us see that we are still on track, um, for meeting most of our, um, district improvement plan objectives for this year. So I think it's been a really productive way to help track that. So that's the update for district improvement, improvement plan.
Oh, so that's available online?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And is there anything on there that looks pretty neat? I always, I always have a question because I kinda respond to texts.
Yeah.
Is there any place where you find like, okay, here's the actual need being addressed by this particular item? Here's the theory of action, and then here's how we're gonna measure it.
Yeah, so we don't, yeah, we don't have our theory of action in there. Um, I think that would be a really nice addition to make sure that we've added that theory of action in there. And that's actually been something we've been working through this year a little bit. Uh, but it is divided into our three basic pillars, um, one being, um, accelerating student learning, um, addressing racial equity, and then also, um, building positive school climate and culture. Those are our three big, um, pillars of what we are prioritizing as a district. And then you can un, you know, unpack those and drill down into the specifics.
It does look more accessible than other versions.
Yeah.
Where can we access this?
So Dr. Judy's got to, he has to publish it. So right now, it's in kind of his little domain of what he controls, and then he's going to push that out. Um, Courtney, I think also is going to be publishing that through our website.
Okay.
And Maggie, so for the equity action plan and the PBIS implementation plan, there will be a separate?
Yep.
Thing like this.
Exactly.
And, and that's the one where we've talked about. There, y'all are gonna have all that narrative.
So does this go away then, this whole?
Yes. Well, that'll be more of a, like, just what we use to create and draft the project internally. And then what we'll publish is more of the timeline version like you see up there.
Okay.
So the assignee is the author of the, so who writes the milestones?
Dr. Judy wrote the milestones, but that is just a translation from what we put on our district improvement plan. So we met as a cabinet, reviewed the plan, talked about what things needed to be done to, to move those tasks forward. Um, and the person assigned is the cabinet member responsible for making sure that work is done.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to our last item, I think, except for future dates in the journal. And, uh, and that's to discuss, uh, the committee, for the homestead exemption and specifically the resolution. And I, I guess we should kick it off. I mean, I mentioned my idea, but it's just an idea, that we would have a steering committee, um, to sort of figure out the next steps for the committee, but that we would basically appoint a steering committee that would consist all non-board members, um, but representatives from specific groups or interests within the community or specific areas of expertise. And that we would then give that steering committee a specific charge, which is, you know, here's your running room. And at the last meeting, I think we agreed that the charge should be to have a, work within a budget that we would set of an incremental impact due to the senior exemption of one-point-two million dollars projected to the year, five years out, whatever that year is.
Right.
Um, and so we'd say, look, you've got one-point-two million dollars of incremental impact. We need to talk a little bit about the baseline, one-point-two billion over what? But, but, um, and then we would, um, essentially charge the committee to come up with a way to design an exemption that would achieve our objectives and to some extent their objectives within the limits we've set. With the general objective being, I think, to promote, um, well, to ensure that, um, to the extent possible, school taxes aren't the reason that any senior has to leave Decatur, right? This would never be a deciding factor. And to promote the values of diversity and both age diversity, racial diversity, and income diversity. And I, I don't remember how we expressed that in words, but I thought, thought that was a general idea.
Yeah, and the, and the draft says it, you know, a focus on our most vulnerable senior citizens. And I think that kinda summarizes what you just said. I think the charge in the draft is actually pretty well captures what we discussed at the last meeting.
I didn't actually read this before. It, it wasn't, it wasn't available before, so I haven't seen.
Yeah, it was posted kind of late, but.
Where is it?
Um, right here, if you wanna see it. So that, there, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's items one, two, three, and four.
Okay. Right. So this all works for me.
Yeah, and I just have, I have a couple of comments on item three. It's, um, as the committee's charged to first review the study that we had done by Georgia State, and then the charge here does say to focus on common standard practices for homestead exemptions. And I think they, because this, this was a, a draft used previously, it may not have been updated to reflect and kind of align with that study. I think we just need to tighten up item three, um, to match that wording in the study that we're referencing, um, to say a focus on common standard practices for homestead exemptions, including recommending income requirement, um, exemption requirements instead of value limits. Cause the report says exemption amount.
I don't know what you're reading from. I don't think Tasha does.
Okay.
This is, this is the draft.
Looking at the draft, so it was.
It was not in the packet, but it was posted to the electronic, uh, agenda at some point later. And I think that it's been printed out to everybody.
If you don't mind.
I printed it. I brought it. So maybe, yeah, just take a minute to pull it up. And I don't think it was, um, attached until yesterday or today, so.
The only thing I would add, when we read it, is, is I, I hear Jane can speak for herself, discussing who we include in the board is the only thing that I wanna make sure that we include in the conversation.
Yeah, we'll, we should talk about that. So I just wanted to talk about that point three there. I just think we need to mirror the wording in the, in the study and that our focus be on recommending an income requirement, an exemption amount, and age requirements, and then remove assessment freezes because we don't have a way to quantify that, given the tool that was provided. Cause the tool that was provided focused on those three recommended variables, as mentioned in the report. Does that make sense? Income.
Income.
Exemption amount and age.
Income requirement.
Mm-hmm.
Age requirement.
Yeah.
And what?
Age requirement, exemption amount, and income requirement. Those are the three variables that GSU recommended we focus on, and they are the three variables that they built into the tool that we have that can provide the projected re, uh, revenue loss. So those are the three variables that we're able to calculate and therefore know whether or not we're within that one-point-two million. Cause that tool only focuses on those three recommended variables.
So, I mean, I was the one who suggested the consideration of an assessment freeze, just because it's a, it is a tool that's available that was not.
Yeah.
That they didn't pick out.
Well, if, if we focus on that now, we have no way to quantify it. So we won't be able to, um, stay within, we won't be able to charge that committee with,
Right.
determining whether or not we stay within that one-point-two million, cause we don't have a way to quantify it. So that may come out as an additional recommendation from the committee, if, if that's the direction that go. But I think we, uh, we're asking them to focus on, um, first of all, giving us guidance on those three variables for which we have a tool and hired a company to design for us so that we could accurately project what it would cost for us. Cause that was the whole challenge is, you know, how do we know what this is gonna cost?
I, I don't have a strong feeling about it. It is a tool. It hurts me just a little bit that the limitations of the study are not our consideration. Um, but I also don't know if it's a good idea. I, you know, in other words, I don't know if I think an assessment freeze is a thing that ought to be seriously considered. I don't know.
I think that it can still be considered. It could still be something the committee comes back to us and says, hey, we, you know, in, in addition to these variables, you know, here, here's what we would do, for example, if we just had these variables, but we would like to also consider that. But then we would have to go back to Georgia State and ask them to somehow build that into, give us a way to calculate that and estimate that. Cause otherwise, we would have no idea what we were agreeing to, cause we wouldn't have a way to quantify it. So it could, you know, we're asking the committee to focus on these standard practices because we'd like to know, you know, where, where the community, uh, finds, like, what's most important, you know, that the age at which someone gets it, or whether we, if we have to put some limitations is in, where would we fall within, um, an exemption amount or an income requirement? Um, and I think that those are important things to ask the committee to evaluate so that we can understand where the, you know, where the commu, community and the committee feel that we should fall within those three. And, you know, the committee may come back with, with additional questions or recommendations. And we, we may have to go back to Georgia State to ask additional guidance. But I think in order to, in order for the committee to be able to stay within a, the cap that we've asked them to, there has to be a way to quantify it.
So really what we're saying is that number three, instead of a focus on common standard practices, we don't want the committee to be thinking up its own practices. Instead, what we want is to say, uh, consider the three variables that were, um, built into the GSU study and come up with some combination of those three variables that has a total budget impact of one-point-two million a year.
And, and, you know, the, an important thing to remember is that we, we, in this RFP, asked GSU to consider. We did not go into it saying, tell us, tell us what about, you know, give us guidance on these three variables. We, we said, tell us, you know, give us guidance on what is common and standard and acceptable and recommended. And those were, those were, of all things, and many other things were discussed, the recommendations that came back to us. So it's not that assessment freezes or, or, you know, how long you stayed in your house or other things weren't considered, cause they were, they were studied. And this is the recommendation that came back, back out of the report, that we focus on these three things and that they would, would satisfy.
Just to be clear, I don't remember any discussion of the assessment freeze. I think it seemed like they just didn't think about it.
Um, well, in the RFP, we asked them to consider all things. We never gave them any limitations to begin with and asked them to come back to us with what, what they recommend that we would focus on, given, I guess, given where we, where we were and where we are.
If the, what's the point of the committee if it's just to use the tools that we already have?
Well, we, we spent money and, and time to come up with the tools so that we could actually estimate.
I got that. I listened, I listened to everything they had to say. And we've got the first day, we've got the tools, we've got these levers. If they come back and they're like, consider the things that you have the tools already plugged into.
Well, you got one-point-two million dollars to play with. Who gets it? So who's, how are you gonna allocate the tax relief?
I don't need a committee seventy to plug into that, I mean, that tool.
No, not necessar-
But you, but you have to, I mean, we, I mean, are you gonna, are you gonna make it so that, uh, you know, what should the income limit be? Are you gonna give more?
Sure.
To the, to the, to the, to the lower-income seniors? Are you gonna try to give some to everybody? Um, which is really the, the basic question. Are you gonna focus on income limits or total value limits? I mean, it's those questions. And so the idea is for the committee to run the numbers, come up with a couple of different options and decide what they think is best.
Yeah, it's pretty, it is pretty straightforward, and that's by, eh, eh, design. But there are still important questions to answer, you know, as a, as a community, do we feel like it should stay at sixty-five? Or do we think that it should go, you know, to seventy? Or do we think that, and in doing that, we would have, you know, we could also adjust the exemption amount. I mean, one impacts the other, and where are the priorities? Um, I do understand your point, James, about like, why are we trying to focus this? But I think it's because it, it also needs to, the outcome needs to be something that is something that we can legislate. You know, it has to be something that is, I guess, I don't, I'm not finding the word really, but it's something that can actually be done, that's constitutional, that's reasonable, that's not overly complex, that's something that is proven, um, and, and understandable, something that the community can understand and relate to. And, um, we've, you know, that question was a very big ominous question in the very beginning, and we started this conversation two years ago in twenty-eighteen. And at that time, we realized if we just posed a very open-ended question with no data or research to sort of back up the direction we think we need to go, it could quickly become very overwhelming. And so that was, at that time, over a year ago, when we, as a board, decided to hire an expert in the field that has dealt with communities and tax exemptions before and understands the data and could, could help to rein in what could otherwise become very, a very overwhelming, complex question that, you know, would be difficult to also then turn into real legislation if it weren't, like I said, understandable and something that could actually be implemented, so. could actually be implemented, so.
If the committee comes, if the committee comes back and we say, and they say, we think that this is a great idea.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna work, and the five of us are like, that's gibberish.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, we're, we're gonna call it gibberish, but if a committee comes back with like, hey, Forsyth County just got this passed unanimously.
Right.
Via ballot measure, and the people that we talked to at the state level love it, and it's worked for their seniors. I wouldn't want them to not consider it, is what I'm saying.
Right.
I was gonna ask, could you repeat what you, how you thought it should be, what number three should be?
Well, just, number three, I think, needs to, what, one of the things we want the committee to come back to us with is a recommendation on the age requirement, the exemption amount, and the income requirement.
Mm-hmm.
Period. Now-
Take out assessment freeze.
Yes, out of, out of that. Now, if, if there are other things that the committee strongly feels we need to consider that, like you said, have been legislated and done in other places, well, they can still come back to us. We're not saying you can't. We're asking though, at a minimum, we need, we need guidance on these things because these are things we can quantify and that have been studied, and that have been done in the past, and that people can understand, and that we could potentially legislate.
And assessment freezes is not one of those things?
It is. We just didn't assess it. I mean, DeKalb County has an assessment freeze. Lots of people have assessment freezes.
And, but right now, we don't have a way to quantify it, so if-
Oh, if using the tool.
Right, so, but if it is something that, you know, we want to then go back to Georgia State to ask to help build it in or quantify it, somehow we have to have an idea for how much it's gonna cost, or I don't see how we could possibly agree to it.
I see.
You know, so, you know, so there may, may be other things, you know, there may be other things that, then that's why, you know, we're asking for community input, and there's we're asking, you know, on, on that committee, like Louis said, we're looking to have experts um I'm, I'm Some expertise and also representation from a variety of different groups in the community.
If it's, if that's something that's commonly done, and it sounds like it was an oversight not to include it, but it's something that should be considered. Can we ask them to build it in? I know that's probably.
Well, I, I think we can talk to GSU about that. It, it's possible that depending on how you did it, it wouldn't be that complicated.
I'm not, I can't speak to how complicated anything is, but I do think, I mean, I do think we could
We can ask them to find out.
Put it to the committee to discuss, you know, and in the meantime, we could reach out to GSU to see.
It's also something that we can, I mean, I think the point that we've got a tool, and we don't wanna get into another thing where we don't know what we're doing in terms of the budget impact. And so um I think that it's a very well-taken point. And um it might be that the committee, if they thought that the assessment freeze was a thing that needed further consideration, maybe that's the next five years, right? So maybe, maybe that's just something we take under the long-term consideration, and it could be next time.
Mm-hmm.
The next five-year tweak, or if they felt strongly about it, I suppose we could see if GSU could update the tool. And I have no idea how hard it would be to build something like that in. I just don't.
I don't, I can't speak to that either, so.
But we could, but, but I think it's well-taken that, that we ought to have one clear recommendation from them about limiting it to these three variables. What would you do?
Yes.
If they wanna propose other things for consideration, then let us know that that's of particular interest, and we'll figure out what to do with it.
I think we too need to make sure that we are articulating to the community that the one point two is what we are willing to take, what we as a school board are willing to take for the impact on, on this. And that it won't be in the future spread out to the community again like it was the last time. So if we, if we, I don't know if that can be said in the draft, or just in, just in, in literature that we send out, but that this is the impact we are willing to take for the exemption, and that there won't be, okay, we have to raise the, raise the millage rate again in a year and a half because of the senior exemption, because that was something that was part of our conversation this last time. And so I think if we're, I just wanna make sure that that, that's why that one point two million is, is an important number, because it's the number we're willing to take, the school board, school is willing to take, and it's not going to, the community is not gonna feel that pinch like they felt last year, or this upcoming year.
Um, can I ask a follow-up about that? It was, we voted for one point two million in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen dollars, the population.
That's what we thought it was going to be.
That's what we thought, but as a community, we all went to the ballot, we all voted overwhelmingly for one point two million.
That's true.
It, the population has grown, and Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, pop, uh, housing prices have gotten quite significant since then. So like, that bill, even if we had been right, it gave worth far more than one point two million dollars, even if the math had been right in twenty fifteen.
There'd have been some growth that we're not talking about.
Right, so.
At the same time, when we first got into it, we weren't talking about one point two. We were talking about seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty thousand. And then it was one point two, and then it was three. And um, so it just seemed like, because when we went to the ballot, we were thinking one point two.
Yeah.
Arbitrary, but it seemed like as good as, as any sort of stake to put in the ground. And I'll tell you, I'm a little bit nervous about the messaging that it doesn't affect the millage, because it does. Because, you know, you, 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 you have a budget, you have needs, you decide what they are, you tax in order to fund them. And if we had more tax revenue, we would either expand our programs or, or reduce the millage. And I, I don't know, I just think it's, I, I, there was some of the messaging around the exemption when it passed the first time, that this wouldn't, wouldn't affected the millage. It absolutely does. And so I, I kinda feel like we oughta just own it and say, this is what we propose. Cause someone's paying for it, right? And, you know. That's my thought.
But it's, you know, this time, I think we have a much better grasp of what it's going to cost. We've studied it, we are able to project it you know, with reasonable accuracy, because it's been studied. And so I think it's a much more educated decision upon, like, us now. And we're putting in some limits to keep it, you know, to what we really expect it to be, based on this, this thorough study that was done. And so I, I feel like we have a lot more confidence going into it that it will cost one point two million, and not that, you know, before we really didn't know, and there were many factors that we could not have calculated before, because the data wasn't available. Now that we've had it, we're able to study it, and I think as we go forward, it will be much more accurate.
Right. Do, do we wanna talk composition of steering committee?
Sure.
Um, cause I think we're in agreement. They'll make one proposal based on three variables. They can recommend others, and we will take it into consideration.
Mm-hmm.
But we're not doing anything that we can't quantify or project. For the steering committee, first, as a general proposition, I suggest that we follow what we've kind of adopted as a thing for, we haven't had many committees, but we always talk about doing it this way, that we'll identify the groups that we think should be represented on the committee, and we'll ask those groups to serve up a representative. But basically, we want those groups to be happy with their representative, and so we're not gonna tell them who to, who to, who to put on the committee. We should have some kind of a check to make sure that we've got appropriate diversity, cause if we just turn it over, you could wind up with an unbalanced committee. So we should reserve the right to sort of make, you know, ask for another go or something. But the presumption should be that whoever people serve up is who we're gonna put on there. In, in terms of, and this is just, you know, um, an initial set of thoughts, and so the whole point is to figure out where people disagree or have other ideas. But I think that there should be somebody who, not necessarily employed by the city, but, but somebody who is representative of the city's interests. So someone who's sort of, we talked to Mayor Garrett and say, so who, who do you suggest? I don't think it should be the mayor herself, but, but somebody.
But you said that they, they don't have to necessarily be employed by the city?
If the, if the, if the mayor and the Board of Commissioners say X, I think that we should.
Whoever they recommend.
Whoever they recommend, right. As long as they're comfortable, that person understands your interest. I think that we should have somebody representing the CSD parent community. I mean, we're gonna be around, and, and we'll provide some guidance, but I don't think we need to be like on the committee or anything like that. I don't think we need the administration on the committee. I mean, David's gonna facilitate. But I think that we should have a parent, like probably pulled from the ranks of the PTAs or SLTs. I actually don't know who to ask, because there's more than one, so I don't know how to.
Is that CLT?
Maybe ask, and you just ask them to figure it out, give us a name. I think Beacon Hill should be represented. And I've forgotten the name. It's not Decatur Active Living. We talked about-
Senior Advisory Board, I think, maybe they're called.
Senior Advisory Board.
The Active Living too.
Yeah, it's a, it's a committee at the, at the city of seniors.
And, and to ask for basically a citizen member of the Senior Advisory Board.
Mm-hmm.
After this, my list gets kind of thin. Um, in terms of ideas, I was thinking DBA, the Decatur Business Association. With, with the idea that we have city interests that aren't directly tied into the schools, maybe even ideally a, a DBA person who doesn't have children in the schools, just to, to get that um perspective on there. And then I have two blanks, although I do have ideas for the blanks. One, one approach would be to think of other groups. A different approach might be to think of people with particular expertise.
So it's probably important for guiding the conversation.
And we've talked about, um, I don't know if we're gonna name names right now, but, but there's a lawyer with expertise in this area who's volunteered, who's talked to us before. And so that would be a good addition, and then there's a tax expert, you know, who's.
The one that emails us, that had, like, broke it down.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that person probably would be perfect.
Yeah.
Okay.
Has that analytical mind.
Yeah.
Isn't there like a downtown Decatur association or?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the one we spoke, yeah.
Yeah, the one we spoke at. What, what are they called? Downtown Decatur.
Downtown.
That's what Nia says, downtown Decatur. Downtown Decatur.
Yeah. It's a, seems to be a mostly senior group.
Yeah.
Of residents that live in downtown Decatur.
Mm-hmm.
Probably would, would, actually, I, I don't know what their perspective would be. Would we want to, I mean, maybe instead of the Decatur Business Association, we would, we would slot that for the
Yeah, maybe so.
But one, one question I'd have is, why favor the down, I mean, they're just downtown residents, and so, you know, you could have a
Yeah, the only reason I was thinking about it, cause they are seniors.
Yeah, the majority of them, if, if, like, almost all were, and, and they seem to have, you know, representatives from all of the um condo complexes and stuff downtown, and they seem to have a, just a good cohesion amongst them.
Would we do that?
Different diverse people and um backgrounds were, you know, and so I think, I don't know, they just seemed to be a good group when we went to go speak with them. And um the tax exemption was something that they talked about in their meeting as well, so it is.
Is that a better, is that a better representation than the Senior Advisory Board, maybe, or?
No, probably I would say maybe like what, what you suggested, Louis, instead of DBA, I think would probably be better.
Or in addition to, I, the reason why I thought your point about the DBA was good was because it might give another perspective that's non-school. But are we under-representing the school perspective then? I mean, we have one, one person from the-
Here's an option. What if we take, what if we expand the number? Well, let's see, there's a couple of things.
Yeah.
One is that the, the lawyer and tax specialist, uh, experts, I think, also probably are associated with the school system.
Are they? Okay.
That's one thought. Another thought is that we could add two more slots, and, and we could um have a nine-member board, which I think is manageable.
Like, leave it at seven, a charge of nine with the goal of diversity.
You just confused me. What'd you say?
Well, you started with making sure it's diverse. I assume you mean for age, race, representing the different parts of the city.
Right.
A charge of nine, put this together, what does it look like? Would, please feel free to add two. So David in the group sits.
You're saying that we, we start with seven.
Yeah.
And, and we, and, and then we, we have two open slots to see what we've got, and if we need to add two, that's a good idea.
Let, let me ask you a question. If we only have
Kinda leave it to them to figure it out.
Potentially, I guess, right now, one senior. Would these other folks, how much, how invested are they in, or, you know?
Kind of assuming that Beacon Hill would serve up a, a senior.
And this city perspective might as well.
Yeah.
And the DBA could as well.
And then Decatur senior and downtown Decatur probably both be seniors.
Well, that's, yeah, I wasn't sure if we were keeping both.
Oh.
I, I shouldn't have said that. I mean, maybe it will, or maybe it won't, right?
Well-
Beacon Hill?
Yeah.
I'm not certain that it would be a sen- no.
I don't know why.
Certain.
It wouldn't be.
Yeah.
But I do have a senior who
Didn't Bill Floyd express the interest of sitting on the committee?
Right.
Not to name names, but.
That would be this.
Well, we named the names. Um, I have, Mayor Wilson's also interested in being on the committee.
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking, but um.
But she wouldn't be, she, we have another-
That's not Beacon Hill.
I mean, she is Beacon Hill, but she's.
She qualified?
We have a person that's been working on, in addition to Mayor Wilson, who advocated for this. We have another person that's been working on the um affordable housing task force.
Perfect, that's perfect.
Uh, we have a committee, and so the chairperson of that person.
Why don't we have an affordable housing task force on?
Oh, the affordable housing task force.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that is a very interesting perspective to have, cause that's kind of what this was about.
Yeah, that was, that's.
All right, now we're at eight. Do we wanna just go ahead and?
The only other thing that I would say is-
Number nine.
Well, what group would she represent?
Well, just, Mayor Wilson's picture was on the door hangers that went out advocating for this.
Oh, I just wonder if she would represent a group, or if it would just be her first.
She represents seniors.
Seniors, yeah. Or just-
Well, if she's willing, I mean, I'd love her perspective.
And she was certainly very active during the process.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
She would, she would sit there, she wants to sit.
Right. Exactly.
All right, so I've got city, CSD parent to be named, Beacon Hill, Senior Advisory Board, DBA, the lawyer, the tax specialist, Affordable Housing Task Force, Mayor Wilson. Everybody happy with that?
I'm happy with that.
Mm-hmm.
I, I would just throw in that if the Decatur Business, a real, someone that can speak to real estate and realities around Decatur, I think brings a lot of value to this, the way that prices have gone up and stuff like that. If, if one of these people can do that, I think brings a lot of expertise to it.
I suppose we should, we could, we could make suggestions to that effect.
Right.
You know. Now, we, we filled out our nine spots. We've lost our wiggle room.
Yeah, but that could be a suggestion to the DBA to consider the most qualified person to represent their interests.
I guess, but, but I guess we've just sort of guaranteed ourselves what.
We've got our nine.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so we, we have to, we have to make some amendments to this, and we have to name this committee.
Yeah.
And so, how are we gonna do that? Cause we're gonna have to, I guess, you know, maybe we should just do it, circulate it, and I'll be happy with it. We can sign it whenever, but as long as we've got the charge down, we'll just do it that way.
I think so. Um, I think we, we talked about the charge, which was the second page. On the first page, um, under the, now therefore be it resolved, I think number one is fine, but number two is what we are removing, cause this was kind of a
That's right.
a generic old form, I think we perpetuated. Um, and then number three, I think it, it may need to read differently because we're taking out number two, so at the direction of the board com- possibly, or which one? As a, number three, it says at the direction of the committee chair and secretary, which we just removed in number two. We need to put something else there at the direction of the, is it board?
This was number three.
Oh. Cause we just did that, so.
So we, so we, we're not giving them any flexibility anymore for the composition, so that's sad, right? That's your, that's your point. And we need to ask them to elect a chair, from amongst themselves, I'll decide, right?
Sure.
Yeah, we don't need to do that.
And then mention that Dr. Duty will facilitate.
Dr. Duty will facilitate.
I have a question about, um, whereas the, or is it the third one? Are we still wanting to keep that, the slow growth in our schools?
Oh, that's a good question.
In there, even though it really, that the study showed that it really wasn't?
No, I would agree with.
Maybe we just remove that whole statement, yeah.
Louis, in terms of our composition, who, what was number one? Was, I had written down groups.
City.
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 I don't know why it seems funny to name specific people while we're sitting up here. So maybe we won't.
But we maybe should ask them first.
Well, that's what it is.
If they're willing.
They don't see their name up in
Yeah.
somewhere. Where we've talked to them.
Um, so do we just remove number three, or do we feel like we need to put a purpose in there? What is the purpose?
Of number three?
What is our, what is our purpose? I mean, we've talked- I mean, we've talked about keeping it because we said it's the right thing to do.
Oh, here's a question. I'm sorry.
The per.
I wasn't gonna think about the purpose.
Thanks, Louis.
We'll come, we will, we will come back to that.
Yeah, we not, we don't wanna talk about purpose tonight?
No, I didn't mean, I, I, my comment was not on point, that's all. I was going to a different thing. So we need to come up with a statement of purpose.
Mm-hmm.
Which I thought we had in here, but we.
This is old.
And it was our initial purpose.
I, I wrote it once and, and, and read it and it seemed like it was fine. It was just, you know, basically to, you know, spread the one point two million.
Mm-hmm.
So, we can do that. I wonder about three A.
Okay.
That, which, we don't really want them to review the study. We're not inviting them to, to quibble with the study, I don't think.
I think it's good background information, but I don't think we're opening up a debate about it. Um, because, I mean, we, we hired experts that have, I mean, if there are questions, I think we can, certainly go back to Georgia State for more information or for explanation where, where needed.
I just want it to be clear that the question is not, did GSU do its job right? We're just done with that.
Right. So how do we, how do we word that more clearly? Cause I think it's, it's definitely.
Based on the.
This committee should definitely read it and understand it. And we're asking them to use the tool that's proposed for our use based on that study.
It's like relying on the study. Got it, you know, da, da, da.
Yeah, right.
Familiarize themselves with.
Um.
Good word. Cause they would have to know what didn't work, you know, I mean.
Correct.
Have that background out of some study.
Yeah, it's valuable, so.
And somehow, number two has to be explicit about the incremental part. And we have to figure out what the incremental over what. At the time, it was, we had a set of exemptions that cost X. We're willing to take one point two plus X. It has been pointed out to me that the exemption has actually bulked up all of the pre-existing exemptions as well, because when everyone came and registered based on their age, that probably, that number X grew as a result of what we did.
Right. Cause people weren't registering.
That's right.
Right.
And I, you know, we, we should have some sense of what that is, actually. Um, I, I don't, my, my inclination is that, um, to let it go, just to, well, so be it. But if it's a giant number, we should know that.
What, which one? Sorry.
We're, we're talking about an incremental impact, impact over the pre-existing exemption amount. So basically, in the tool, if you take out the senior exemption and leave in place all the exemptions that existed before we pass that exemption, that would be your baseline.
So the tool is giving us the incremental.
The tool will give us the incremental.
Yes, okay.
The point is, though, that our senior exemption and the publicity that it got over the past five years has actually grown that baseline substantially for the same reason that we underestimated the bu- bu- budget impact.
Right.
And are we still comfortable with one point two million on top of that? I'm inclined to say yes, just so be it. But it, but I have no idea what the number is and we should look at it before we say yes. Follow me?
Do you think that number will go up? Or it, it, it already has?
It's already, it's already gone. It's probably, it's probably a set, set thing now.
Yeah. I think we move forward.
Just leave it alone.
Yeah.
Leave it alone. Okay, good enough. Okay. Well, I can, I, I can go home and try to do what we've said and either succeed or fail and y'all can comment.
Be happy to. I'll be happy to work on it and comment.
All right.
So we'll just get a, get another draft. I think we've been pretty specific, so if, you know.
I feel like another draft ought to do it with comments. And then, and then we ought to go ahead and not wait for the next meeting to go ahead and say yes, this is it, start calling people.
Okay.
Okay.
And then what do we need to then formally approve it at the next meeting in order to?
We'll need to formally approve it at some point, but, um, next time we're together, we can do it.
Okay.
As long as we're agreeing to it. Okay, that's it for our agenda, except for future dates. Um, um, do we have a set of future dates?
Um, just some reminders, the conference, um, that's coming up in April.
Is everybody signed up that needs to be signed up?
Is that the NSBA conference?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
April?
Who's going to that?
So far, Jana and I are confirmed. Have you still a if, or do you know for sure?
I unfortunately cannot. I have.
You know, you can.
Yeah.
The, the only other thing I thought we, we should talk about is that we haven't really done, uh, an orientation or, um, uh, sort of a board norms, kind of an exercise. Um, that we, you know, we ought to do. We've got new members. We ought to talk about how we tend to function and, um.
Did you do that for me?
I don't remember. We, I felt like we did nothing else for like two years after I got on.
So you were tired of it, cause I didn't get to do it either.
Right.
So I have, I've been misbehaving this whole time.
There's an executive session on March tenth. Would that be a good activity for that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so let's do that for March tenth.
That's good.
Will you remember that or make a note in some way?
Thank you. Great suggestion.
All right. Is there anything?
James texted me today like, what time is executive session? I've never been. There you go. Perfect example.
I was thinking about that.
And the working sessions start at seven.
Which ones?
Working sessions.
I think they've been starting.
They usually start at seven.
Okay, if, are, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.